I'll call the Guthrie Planning Commission meeting to order for Thursday, October 8th, 2015. Could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Chairman Powell?
Here.
Mr. Chappell?
Here.
Mr. Coffin?
Here.
Mr. French?
Here.
Mr. Ogden?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Item two is public comments. We want to pass by this until we address them. Item three is approval of the minutes for August 13th, 2015. Do I hear a motion?
So made.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Can we have a roll call or a vote, please?
All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none.
Item four is discussion and approval of application 2015-20113200 regarding a request to construct a metal building on the property located at 5311 Meadow Lake Drive. Do we have a staff report, please?
Yeah, this is just in response to the Planning Commission wanting to have a little bit more oversight regarding accessory buildings and non-primary residential buildings in residential areas, kind of protecting neighborhoods and those kinds of things was the intent behind why the Planning Commission is seeing this now. Twenty-six letters were mailed out. We did get one form of communication earlier today, and they were, one of the neighbors for this application that received a notification was not in support for the construction to be in the, what is the front yard. So that's the staff report, and then we have Ms. Kathy Oliver signed up. I don't know if she's here for the Meadow Lake Drive application or another item. Ms. Oliver?
No going on.
It's called. Okay. That's all we have. Would you like to sit up at the podium?
I can. I'm looking to put up a garage slash building for storage, and I've been in contact with the contractor. And the building that I'd like to put up is 30 by 40.
Okay, so you're not here for the Meadow Lake Drive specifically?
No.
Okay. We'll return to public comments.
Yeah, you told me to come in and visit to see what-
Okay, okay.
What I could do about mine.
Yeah. So for Meadow Lake Drive, we are all taken care of for reports. I believe the applicant is here.
Could we ask what the objection was?
They were not in support of a metal building to be constructed.
And that was the only comment?
Within their visibility.
Okay.
Absolutely. We just asked that you join us at the podium.
We just heard you say that it was in the front yard. It's actually in the backyard.
Can you state your name, please?
I'm Brandon Dabney.
Okay. And you're with?
I'm with BBM. I'm the one who is selling the building.
Okay.
For Larry.
Yeah, the comment that was made was specifically for the front yards. I don't know if she had gotten some kind of image or what. The report doesn't include an image that we send out to the neighbors within 300 feet. It does not include an image, so I don't know if she had-
Was it visible from her front yard?
She believes it's visible, it will be visible from her front yard.
I understand. It's a corner.
It's a corner lot, right?
So the front yard is more than the front yard on the street. It's a corner-
Right, kind of on the side, but in the backyard, behind the fence, off by, I think, 20 or so feet from the fence itself, so.
Basically, it's right next to Lake Road.
But I can promise you they're good-looking buildings, so.
I understand that. Basically, the front yard deal, kind of with a corner, with a corner lot, front yard becomes a little bit more complicated than just a home that's on, if you understand what I'm saying. So front yard on Meadow Lake is one thing, but front yard on Lake Road would be another since it's a corner lot, if you hear where we're coming from.
I understand, yes, sir.
Any other comments?
You're going to start?
Hello. My name is Larry McKay. I'm the owner of the property along with my wife, Donna. We bought the property in March, closed on the property in March, and started to move in early April, and I had problems with my knees, had infection in both knees, so I was in the hospital for seven or eight weeks. So that kind of put everything on hold. And once I got out of the hospital around the 8th of June, then I started working with BBM, and I didn't know anything about a permit or that type of thing. So started working with BBM and come up with the price of stuff and the colors that I wanted to use. And then we found out through the contractor that we couldn't put up a metal building without a special permit, so I did the applications. In the, in the application, I included a deal of the, how the house is laid out and how the building's going to be over to the side. Since April, we've rented a building, a storage building, and we've been having most of our stuff stored in there. This, this building is going to be a storage building and a place to keep my tools, air compressor, stuff like that. Have a little bass boat that we like to take down to the lake.
Any comments from any of the commission members?
So what does our current code say for residential, metal buildings in R1 residential zoning?
The, again, the history of this was, it goes a little bit outside of the code because we wanted to have a little bit more oversight with all of the accessory buildings that were popping up. And so kind of the concerns with a lot of the neighbors that we were hearing was, you know, we didn't get a chance to hear that this was happening, and all of a sudden I'm stuck looking at a metal building. It's an accessory structure under 250 square feet. I don't know if I have the size of this in front of me.
724 by 30.
24 by 30.
724.
And so it's, you know, it would obviously be for a, sorry, for a building of under 250 square foot, it wouldn't need a construction permit for something this size. It would, of course, need now Planning Commission review and a construction permit from our inspector.
It is 250?
250 or 200.
200.
250, 200, sorry.
200.
One of those two.
Doesn't it also say that no metal structures are permitted in the front yard?
Yes.
Okay.
No accessory structures at all are permitted in the front yard, no matter what the material is.
We've had that problem with carports and other things, which that would be the problem with your placement.
But this is not in the front yard. This is around the side. I agree, it's a corner lot, and it's on the side, but it's not front yard.
Well, but he faces a street here.
Right, but on corner lots, but on corner lots, how most cities do it, and I don't know if ours is different, they look at the frontage on both streets. There's a setback, and it says clearly on your plat you gave us with the drawing, there's a 25-foot building line and a 20-foot easement line on Lake Road. And so that building sits within the building line. So either way, whether it's a setback or not, your plat contradicts where it's sitting.
He's back 25 feet. He's back, he's right on-
Yeah, it's 20 feet, and then there's a 25.
Well, there's, all right, but he's not on that 25 line.
Oh, you're saying that overlaps?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I was saying it's 20 plus 25.
Well, and when I put that on that, when I platted that on there, I didn't know exactly where it was going to be. You know, we can put it 30 feet from the fence if we need to, from the middle of the street or whatever.
Well, you just have to clear your building line, your 25-foot building line. That's all you need to do.
Which actually has to be back for the-
Sat back.
Mr. McKay, with all due respect, again, our specifications, and even if we look at commercial buildings, our specifications that all metal exterior buildings are allowed only, only in industrial zone. Obviously, you're not industrial zone, R1. And if we get into our regulations and things as relates to out structures, it gets pretty detailed. Number one, that this shall be designed in an attractive manner to complement the surrounding neighborhood. Looked at your home, lovely home, very nice property, complements you on it.
I think it will be complimentary.
Well, but again, we're talking, we're talking metal. And then on outbuildings, must be a similar color and design of the main residence and placement regardless of the size, must be to the rear of the front facade. Now, the corner lot, that does make a little bit more demanding of you, which is, because you really technically have two fronts of facades.
We have fruit trees on, will be on both corners of the, of where the building's going to be. It's going to be blocked, basically blocked from the street, either way, either way.
Basically, you're right, smack across the street from several nice homes of your neighbors there.
And if I drive through Guthrie, which is about any street, I'll see metal buildings, and they're not commercial.
And that, and you know, that is, that is true. And these, and I want to do a little, I've done a little bit of research on this. Surprising, I know. But, and just so people watching at home too, I wanted to explain a little bit about, you know, all cities in Oklahoma have to have a comprehensive plan. It's required by law. And a comprehensive plan, the City of Guthrie paid some city planners, designers, and I don't have the name of the company that did it, but City of Guthrie paid anywhere from $15,000 to $20,000 to have our comprehensive plan done. And in 2009, I believe, using, and the comprehensive plan is a template for how a city should grow. Very specifically, and I would, I just wanted to read one paragraph because I went out and looked at your property and both properties that are up for consideration. But one of the things that it mentions, and it talks about in the comprehensive plan, that Guthrie's character has been and will continue to be dependent on its urban design. And although no one likes to be restricted in the use of their own property, it is in everyone's best interest to control certain elements in order to increase and protect property values. And as, as a commission, in the last several months, we've had a lot of issue with metal buildings that have been built and then later received complaints from neighbors. And in a lot of cases, we didn't even have someone, even after the people were notified, they didn't complain until after the building went up. But the, the, the building standards for Guthrie were adopted in 2009, and these are minimum building design standards, and it covers commercial building appearance and residential. And the reason that you all are here, because you're asking for a special use permit, which means that you're asking for something that according to the building standards should not be happening. Now, there are metal buildings all over Guthrie. I assume they've been grandfathered in or were done before these standards were approved. But it does say that all metal exterior buildings are allowed only in industrial zones. If you were to build a commercial building in Guthrie now, what is it, 60%?
60%.
Correct. 60% of it can be metal or 40%?
It's not to exceed 60% metal materials.
Yeah. So even if you were building a commercial building and, and R1 residential housing, it's the most restricted zoning there is. So for us to approve a metal building at this point, and I'm not for sure that we, we have as a board, I've only been on the board for, the commission for a year, for us to approve it, we're going to have to go against the ordinances that were written, the standards that were written and designed. And I, and I do want to read just a little bit of this. This is the introduction to the building design standards. "The purpose of these standards is to ensure that the function, quality, and appearance of a proposed structural are compatible when considered in the context of the surrounding area and the total architectural theme of the City of Guthrie, how the architecture relates to other site design considerations, and that elements will be considered as a part of the design review." Now, they, the city council, and I imagine the city planner at the time, wrote these ordinances, and I feel as a commission that it's not, it's not our place to override the rules. This isn't your last stop necessarily. I mean, there is the-
Board of Appeals.
Yeah, there's the Board of Adjustments, and there's the, but after this, it would be the city council.
Correct, because it is a special use permit. This Planning Commission makes recommendations-
We make a recommendation, and whether, regardless of what we say, the city council is, is the power here.
Has, has final call on it.
Has the final call.
Correct.
But, and I don't know how the other commissioners feel, but I feel that part of my duty as a commissioner is to, to have a great deal of respect for the standards that, that have been written. And I did see other metal buildings in your neighborhood. I, I will volunteer that your particular building at 720 square feet, when you're driving down Lake Road, will be the primary structure on that street. But anyway, that's, that's just my little bit of research and-
There's a home just south, just west, about such a primary that it's facing-
The, the comment was, there was a home facing, sorry, just south and west of you.
Facing north.
Facing north.
We certainly have no disagreement with that, and that does not particularly make us real happy if we're doing our job representing the citizenship of Guthrie. Those happened before our time, perhaps grandfathered in, perhaps bootlegged in. We know how those things happen. We're trying to do the best job we can for all of you and for the interest of this city at this time, as Commissioner Chappell says, with the standards we have, with the hope that it's certainly in the best interest.
And I will tell you, from just our past experience in the last couple of months, there are a lot of people in this community that are very opposed to a metal building going even in the backyard next to their home. We've had a bunch of metal carports go in, and that's been an issue.
I've got one more comment.
If you don't mind. Again, everyone, this is being filmed, and so I, that's why we ask for you to join us at the podium, so that the public listening at home can also hear.
I just had one more comment. I got on the internet, found out about the special permit request. I came down and paid the money for the permit and found out what all I needed to do. I, I found out that I had to get names and addresses of everybody within 300 feet of my property. There was like 30 people on that list. Whether they were within 300 feet, I don't, I don't know. I got that from the, oh, help me out.
Actstric Company?
Yeah.
Actstric Company.
And that costs a little bit of money. That costs more than your permit, your special permit. But anyway, one person out of 26 or 30 or whatever, I'd say that's a pretty good percentage.
May I speak?
Yes, ma'am, if you'd come to the podium, please, and give us your name.
My name is Sue Ducharme. I too live out on Lake Guthrie. And I'm sort of speaking for three other people who have contacted me. I think it's, it's unfortunate that the only way we have, and I'm not saying it's a bad process, but to pit one neighbor to another by, and asking them to come here and say, "I don't want your building," it's difficult for them to do that. What's not difficult is for them to call me, because they know me, and they know that I'm the president of a neighborhood association, and then I'm involved in the community. But you do have three more people that are opposed. And I will say that we have one woman on the west side of the lake whose home completely flooded, ruined all of her floors, had to have some walls repaired because of a Bojack building just like this, that was put in without a permit. And when we had the rains just recently, it all ran off of that building onto her property. And, and she told me she knew that the guy built it without a permit. But my point is, those kinds of structures don't really have a place in a, you know, in a neighborhood, a development, where we have 25 or 30 homes 10 feet apart or less. And even though you're on a corner, they're large, and they're unsightly. And no matter where you're sitting from your front porch or your bedroom, the last thing you want to see is a big ugly. And I know it, I'm not saying your product is ugly. But if you move out into what we think is the country, but is really still the city limits, we like to think that our subdivisions remain subdivisions, not a commercial or area. And I know there's a lot of them out there too, and I find them all offensive, because they, they hurt every property value in this town, no matter how nice the neighborhood you have, no matter how run-down the neighborhood has, has been or considered. Every time you put up a metal building, it diminishes the value of your neighbor's property. So that's, that's just what I wanted, wanted to say, that you do have three other folks besides myself that would make the call.
Thank you.
I have a question.
I can, I can repeat the question.
I would request a no if she's within that 300 feet.
The question was, was the lady that just spoke within the 300 feet. Ms. Ducharme, were you within, did you receive a notification?
I did not, but the three people who asked me to speak on their behalf are.
Like, could you come down?
They could have, but you know, would you be angry with your neighbor if they showed up here?
No.
But they don't know that. They're hesitant to come do that.
Thank you.
So.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to deny this application.
Motion's been made to deny this application. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been denied. Motion's been made and seconded. Can we have a vote, please?
Motion to deny. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none. Motion, the, the special use permit will go as a non-referral to the city council. Mr. McKay, I will make sure that we get in contact with you to let you know the council date.
Sorry.
I will let you, I will get in contact with you to let you know the council date. Again, that's a motion that just basically, it's not a official denial because this board can't make that denial. It will be a recommendation to the city council.
You're not a denial, but-
Again, it's a recommendation.
Well, Mr. McKay, the city council has final say on everything, on any board that we sit on.
Correct.
So you, you still have an alternative ongoing address with the city council, and they may approve it. They can override us, so.
Correct.
I've got a letter here that says the second public hearing will be held at City Council at 7:00 p.m. on Tuesday, November the 3rd. Did that go or not?
Okay, then you already have the information. Wonderful. I'm, sorry, I wanted to just verify that with you.
Item five is discussion and approval of application 2015-20113224 regarding a request to construct a metal building on a property located at 6909 Chris Madison Road. Do we have a staff report, please?
Yeah, if you take a look, sorry, I want to make sure I'm, I'm the right one. 6909 Chris Madison Road, building for storage for personal items, 20 by 24, dark red or brown roof and wainscoting. And the applicant is here.
I'm probably not feeling too good about right now.
No. I think I'm sitting around Lake.
Same deal.
Yeah.
Please state your case.
My name is Steve Berry, and I've got some updated information for my application, which Cody told me to bring in tonight.
Correct.
I've changed the location of my building. I'm now going to bury it in the back of my property. Seriously, I already had planned on this.
Right.
To get past any problems with anyone being able to see it. No one will be able to see it, because I've got nobody behind me for, except the sheriff, and he's on the Academy Road. And I've got an updated picture of what I was wanting to build, and I've got some aerials of where I'm going to build it at. I don't know if you guys are interested in even looking at that at this point, but-
I did ask Mr. Berry to bring those updated photos with him tonight.
Sure, we can look at them. Okay.
Is this the end of the City of Guthrie right here, or is, does it go on beyond?
No.
No, it'd still be in the city limits, because they called clear out to Liberty Lake.
So even, all of this property back behind here as well?
It'd be in the city limits.
Rock, rock.
Everything north of Seward, I believe, is still city limits, isn't it, Cody?
A little bit south. And city staff received no concern from any of the recipients of the public notices.
Pardon me?
City staff didn't receive any concerns or objections or support for this. Sometimes we do get, you know, neighbors that call in saying, "Hey, you know, I can't make it tonight, but I do support, you know, so-and-so doing this project," or something like that. We, we actually just didn't get any commentary from this one.
Just a question, Mr. Berry. I'd like to show you, we try to remain certainly flexible in, in understanding in these things, but I could give you a little example of where we okay to, a metal building for commercial with wainscoting, which we, we assume we require a certain amount of wainscoting, to be here in, and only because there are a bunch of trees and things. All right, we'll go with it. We're not ogres here. We're neighbors. We're people that love Guthrie.
This was a commercial building.
We'll go with it, as long as you put wainscoting up on this face and that face. Okay, no problems, done. Trees are all gone.
This was brick, brick wainscoting.
Yeah, brick wainscoting.
Brick wainscoting.
Two of us in the planning commission, yeah, few folks say, "That's nice. Nice, thanks."
Right.
Throw a few eggs at us, so, you know. And so I guess that question here, it's nice, you're behind trees, and again, live out, not too far from you. Beautiful property, beautiful homes up there, and it complements you on it. Those trees ever come down. We again have this problem of the no metal, no metal building, and we have to take a stand, like as Commissioner Chappell said, or why have these? Why have these statutes? Folks put a lot of time in this several years ago. Some of us have been on the Planning Commission for a while, and some have, in the past, and they're back again, like Commissioner French. If we don't do the job we're charged to do, we're really not doing our job. And is there any way that you might consider looking at your building and, and, good-looking buildings, great buildings, they'll be there, I assume, a nice concrete slab and all of that. You've got a couple of builders up here. We've been around this game a little bit. But is there any, any possibility we can talk to you about maybe doing something with the building that makes it get a little closer to our statutes? Is that, I don't know if-
What would be wrong with doing it out of wood frame instead of metal?
I mean, I think-
Well, I'm going to do a wood frame, but I was going to use metal siding.
But if, I mean, but if the outside was wood siding, you wouldn't, you would fly right past it, because, I mean, as the ordinance-
I mean, we've already denied one, and here, talking about making an exception.
Right.
I can't support that.
No, I can't either.
But I'm saying, is there, is there any, we could go along with some wood framing and, and-
Yeah, wood, conventional construction, yeah.
Right. The match is the style of the house and the same material.
If there was something agreeable between the applicant and the commission, you could always vote to approve with an amendment tonight.
To not use metal. We could approve it if you did that.
But you don't, you don't want any metal on it, is that what you're saying?
That's what the code goes.
Okay.
That's what the code-
Well, I, yeah, I'll just, I'll, I'll risk it, go to the Planning Commission then, or to the city council.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I would recommend we not approve this.
Motion's been made not to approve. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Can we have a vote, please, Cody?
Again, this motion to deny is going to mean that the special use permit request to the city council will be not supported by the Planning Commission. The motion and a second has been made. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion carried.
Item six is requests for future items of discussion.
I'm going to ask that we go back to public comments real quick and recognize Ms. Oliver that-
Okay, and I would like, I would like to add one thing to both presentations, is that in size and scale, your building is fine. The first building was absolutely too large. Even if it was wood, I would have a problem with it because of how, it would become the prominent building on Lake, I mean, when you turn right at the Mormon church, if you, as you're going down the street, the biggest building you'll see is a 720-foot metal building. And there's a bunch of homes across the street from there, and I, I don't know where the lady that's called in complaining is, but I would imagine that's the source. The size of the first, the second one, you know, if it was wood, it can be approved now, or stone, or whatever.
I'd also like to add one other thing, Mr. Berry. You certainly did a fine job of due diligence, and I compliment you on that.
Yes, you did.
You went around, you took a lot of pictures to show us, and those are pictures that sadly we have seen a lot of. And as we reiterated to you, how some of those got through, we did not know. Maybe they got through before our time. Maybe they got bootlegged in. And so you did a fine job of that, and certainly it's an argument that we looked at and can at least appreciate. And I hope you understand who we're coming from, if we look upon you as a fine neighbor up there. as a fine neighbor up there and a beautiful, beautiful home you have.
Thank you.
Yes.
I know it's not changing. I'm Tabby Berry. I'm the wife. And we have trees there, but I also have a swimming pool. The trees will not come down, because we're keeping the trees there just for our own privacy, so that no one can see the pool. And it's kind of right across from the pool, so you'll notice when you're looking at it, the trees are all there, those won't come down. That's just to keep our privacy in our pool, so no one will see that, they will ever see the building.
It certainly answers the question about the, about the trees, but as Commissioner French pointed out, we would be a little bit hypocritical here if we denied the one and then okayed this.
And then, of course, one thing I'd like to add, too, is these design standards were a template for how Guthrie's going to grow. We don't know that there's not going to be a neighborhood behind your home in 50 years either.
That's fine, I'll be.
You'll be gone.
420.
But these, but these, but these standards were written as a template for growth, and as commissioners, we're sort of, you know, we're between a rock and a hard place here.
Tied to them, yeah.
And like we said, we've had, we've had some eventful times with metal buildings here recently, haven't we, Cody? And so unless and until these standards or ordinances change, metal buildings over 200 square feet aren't, according to the standards, aren't allowed in the city limit.
Mr. Berry, did you want your picture back here to take?
Yeah.
You might as well take that with you.
You may keep that taken to the City Council.
Yes.
Yep. Did we have some more?
Did you get both of them?
They're down there. We have some more. What did we do with those?
You had them, I think. Buried them.
Buried them?
They're down there someplace.
Okay. Well, we buried them.
Well, I hope I didn't.
Oh, here, right here. This has a new location, too. There you go.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Ms. Oliver, would you like to come back up?
Come on, Ms. Oliver. Come on.
I am on a corner lot. I own a huge, my yard is huge. I am over on 18th and College. I was planning a metal building, but that's gone. So, and this, I guess I came to this meeting for enlightenment of what I could do, and the city has wiped away options of what residents can do to, you know, as far as for what would be practical for us. I understand that. My question now is, if I want to put a garage in my yard, and it's where I want to put it, it is going to be very visible, so I go with something that, other than metal. Is that going to be an issue? If I put the garage, like I said, my yard is huge, my house is on the corner of 18th and College, I want to put my garage down from my house in line with my house, so that I have a nice structural form and cutting off my backyard, so I can have privacy in my backyard. Am I okay to do with a wooden structure, or?
I think with conventional construction, you shouldn't have a problem.
You shouldn't have any problem at all with conventional construction, it's just they don't want to allow the metal buildings.
I asked Ms. Oliver to come in, because we couldn't get her on this agenda for this request, I asked her to come and just kind of hear some of the background of why certain rules are in play right now. And so, Ms. Oliver, I can provide you a copy of, you know, kind of the building design standards as well, if you just give me a call later on. But I did ask her to come and just be educated on what has led to what we're voting on right now.
And basically, you know, my plan of action is going to have to be put on hold until I can accommodate to what I need to do to satisfy the city and be in the guidelines, so I'm legal. I'm one of the oddballs that I came before you guys, before I tried to do anything. You know, I do want it to be a 30 by 40, because I have vehicles that I want to store in it, riding lawnmower, motorcycle, you know, things like that. And I want to be in, within the guidelines, and hopefully I'll still be able to afford But, and then also, you know, I guess, I don't know if you guys would handle it or not, is I will need to put in a new driveway, and I don't know if that affects you guys or.
No, I think that that would be, speak directly with the planning department when you talk to them before you get permits. They'll work all that out with you.
I would imagine as long as the structure is not in front of the front profile of your home, you'll be fine.
No, it's going to be right in line. I want, because then I want.
If it's conventional construction, you probably don't even need, you probably would be back here, probably.
Well, I hope not.
They'll issue, they'll issue, we'll need permits.
I felt defeated just sitting there, and I hadn't even been up here.
We appreciate you taking the time to come in.
Okay, well, that shoots, you know, gives me my plan of action and what I need to do, so.
All right.
Give me a call, and I'll, we'll coordinate some way to get you a hard copy or electronic copy of our building design standards.
Okay.
Artie?
So I want to have it unique, though.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver.
She wants to have it unique. She wants to have it unique.
Item six is requests for future items of discussion. Any comments? Hearing none, I will move along.
Well, I'll tell you, are we talking about the, about the planning commission? I really think we need to look further into, we're getting a lot of complaints. We've all had phone calls. I really think we need to get fairly soon involved in a little workshop that, to address perhaps less than these 200-square-foot ones, too, that they're popping up all over. And most definitely need to address the little carport things, because we've had call after call after call about that, and we've been around, taken a lot of looks at them, and some of them.
Just to, just to freshen up everyone's memory, we have had workshop and taken action on accessory structures, garages, carports, and, and storage. And so that's, again, a major reason why we're here tonight, to, this is our first step at formalizing the process. There are a lot of questions that we'd never heard, because we've never formalized a process like this for these kinds of requests.
Correct.
Well, we need to pursue it, and it seems like it's been sitting around for a while, Cody, because we're getting, we're getting a lot of calls of people that are upset about it.
Again, that's why we're here tonight.
I greatly appreciate our lady. The neighbors don't want to call about their neighbors, you know, they don't want to make an enemy out of a neighbor.
Well, I, correct.
But when they call me, they, you know, I know my neighbor mad, would you go?
They can always submit emails, and anything will be redacted.
You know, they think if we report things, if they call in, but they don't care.
Ms. Oliver was here and was very educated tonight on the process. We're always, we're always, we're always willing to educate our, any, any citizen on any step of the process.
Thank you. Item seven, staff comments.
We are anticipating a very busy November agenda, and I will also have, on top of all that, an action item for a vice chair, as was discussed in the last meeting. So, sorry that that didn't get on this agenda, but we will have it on the November agenda, along with several other objects and items.
Thank you, Cody. Item eight, commission comments.
I have a comment. I would like to receive this information not later than the Friday prior to our meetings. Getting this two days before doesn't really give you a lot of time to do much homework.
We meet the standards by the state. If we can try and accommodate that in any way, we actually still for, not, not for these comments necessarily, but for general items that don't need a public notice, we can take applications up to 48 hours in advance, as long as we still get the, on the, on the agenda and send it out in time to News Leader as well as you guys. So we will try and accommodate that, accommodate that as best as we possibly can, but sometimes our hands are just a little bit tied, and we do 48 hours as per state regulations.
Per state, to us, I see what you mean.
For all boards and commissions.
And I'm asking this, is there a chance we could have a special meeting to approve that plat at some point when the city is happy with everything?
Absolutely.
So we can go ahead and move on with DEQ permits and all that?
Absolutely. We will, and that's referring to Chairman Powell's plat application that he submitted the week before last. We have sent it to engineering, and I will, we will start the process for getting the public notices out for council and everything like that, and I will call and see if we can get a.
I believe we have a meeting next Thursday with the city manager and you and the staff, GPW.
Okay.
It's what, 9:00 Thursday, I believe.
9:00 Thursday.
Shelby sent me a text today.
That's new for me, so, all righty.
I have one question. On these building standards, you know, item 12, which is the last one, additional guidelines shall be established through quarter plans and plan reviews. How does that happen, Artie? Do you know?
I have to look at the last time that Renee led one of those. I'm not entirely sure what all the process was. I think a lot of it is we take a amendment to the ordinance to City Council, and that is by recommendation, very similar to exactly how we did this, a recommendation from the planning commission to City Council to formalize this process.
But I do know that, you know, there's been some, what is it, the word I'm looking for, some confusion on fences, you know, and, and in here it says no wire chain link or metal fence. It sounds like some of these things could be tweaked a little bit. I don't think too many people have objection to chain link fences in the backyards.
Not in the backyard.
But, but this doesn't say that.
Okay.
You know, at one point, we got real strict on chain link fences, and, you know, they make some nice looking ones now that, you know, they're covered in that black plastic, and you don't even know it's chain link hardly at all, because it's not so visible.
All right. And that's another question also, Cody, if we could, on fencing, I got a call on some fencing. Our little work session, and are you preparing, with time permitting, some, some suggestions for us to finalize things on these carports, fencing, et cetera? We had a call again, I had a call again the other day on fencing. I really think we need to adjust this fencing, we're seeing fencing going up.
Okay.
And are permits being asked for and/or are permits being issued on these carports and fencing? Are we seeing, are you seeing that in planning?
Again, that, the carports and accessory buildings is already a formalized process. That's why we're here tonight.
But my question is, are you seeing permits being asked for and/or are permits being given for those?
They are, the permits that you are, that we are receiving are going on your agendas for you to take a look at.
Is everybody, is everybody getting a permit? I think that's Vern's question. Or are they just shotguning the things in and hoping?
We are, we are trying to educate everyone on the process for applying for these structures. A lot of them, we, Sue and Sue's now in my, in our suite. We are getting very good about getting ahead of these construction items before, you know, we might see some dirt turned, we go and talk to the property owners, what's going on, we'd like to know what's going on, responding to neighbors' concerns or requests.
Well, I think we need to address the smaller sheds, too. I think that needs to be put in, because they're just popping up everywhere.
Cody, should we put that new ordinance about carports in the city?
We can.
A little.
We can. We can.
So, so everyone knows they need to come forward.
And I don't, and I don't think the problem, we discussed this in one of, in one of our meetings, I think before Ed was even here, but it's not the problem that someone gets a 200-square-foot shed.
It's where they put it.
It's the prob, but well, and it's, it's where they put them, but then also, since they don't have to have a permit for them, they can put seven of them in their backyard. And I've literally seen that many in some of them. So you basically have 800 square feet in somebody's backyard, but they're all little buildings.
Right, and that's why we limited it to one accessory structure in the backyard. You could get a, you would have to go through planning commission for more than one.
Okay.
Okay.
One final question, Cody. Can we, can we see a listing of permits issued, say, over the last two months? I've got some concerns about a couple of buildings that were built probably without permits, or how can we find this out? Because we're being asked about this, and then it's like, well.
If you send us the addresses, we will, we can confirm whether they have or have not been permitted.
Okay, or is there a way that we can see a permit list over the last 30 days, 60 days, anything like, can you, can you run out something like that we can look at?
We can. If you're, if you're asking whether a building has been permitted or not, it would be, I mean, a simple yes, no, instead of waiting until the public meeting or anything like that.
You know, Oklahoma City about once a month, I think, publishes a list of building permits.